That a councillor be here for the public hearing to be entitled to vote on the issue when it comes to the table for debate after the council meeting starts. So if a councillor is not present, then they can't debate or comment on the issue once it comes to the council table. This evening, we have two absences with legitimate excuses. But for the purposes of the record, once I call the meeting to order, we will take a roll call so that the record shows digitally who it is that's present. So when we refer to it later, that evidence is there. And the process of a public hearing is such that we first hear from our staff who describes the application that's before us in detail and goes over the relevant provisions of the Municipal Government Act and the land use planning provisions that apply. And then there are questions of clarification. Most often, it's clear to council, but their councillors get to ask questions of clarification, if they have any, of the staff person who presents. And once that's out of the way, then we ask any member of the public who wishes to present to come forward, and they would come forward to this mic. There is one person registered, Mr Newcombe, who will go first, but then anybody can follow after that. And then the applicant, once everybody has had some input, the applicant, if present, the applicant can come and present as well in order to respond to what has been said in the meeting where there might be or might not be misunderstandings. So that's the way it's going. And then following that, all having heard, everyone that wants to be heard on the issue, then we adjourn the public hearing, and then we'll start the council meeting formally. So that's the way we're going to proceed. I'll call the public hearing to order, and I'll ask all councillors present to indicate now, please. This little procedure, every time we ask for a vote or an indication of presence, it takes about, I don't know. There, time it. It took that long for it to get up on the screen. So you'll notice the councillors Hertle and the deputy mayor are not here this evening. They both have legitimate reasons not to be. We'll deal with that at the council meeting. So entering upon the public hearing and having called the public hearing to order, this is an application to enter into a development agreement for a comprehensive neighbourhood development, which consists of a mix of residential uses and a neighbourhood commercial use at 1207 Belcher Street and associated properties. There's a number of properties that are together in this at Port Williams. For our purposes, this is file 22-07. And Ms Laura Mosher is the staff person presenting to us today for the edification of council. Ms Mosher, when you're ready, if I can get your light on for you here. There.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As the mayor indicated, we are here to discuss a development agreement to permit a comprehensive neighbourhood development. So this application is a development agreement. We have sort of two ways of permitting changes to our regulatory, our land use regulatory system. One is through rezoning, the other is a development agreement. A development agreement is a legal contract between the municipality and a property owner that specifies the permitted uses. These may be different or in addition to the land use bylaw, or it may prohibit uses that would otherwise be permitted in the land use bylaw. And it also enables council to exercise more specific control over not only the type of uses, but over the character, form, and maintenance of the development. The development agreement runs with the land, not with the individual owner. So if the property is sold, any future owners will have the benefit of the permissions and restrictions contained within the development agreement. The ability to enter into a development agreement according to the Municipal Government Act is required to be identified within the municipal planning strategy and the land use bylaw, and it is also intended to include any criteria the council would use to assess the proposal. Our current proposal before us this evening, as submitted, was for comprehensive neighbourhood development consisting of three 67-unit multi-unit dwellings, one two-unit dwelling, a neighbourhood commercial use, and maintaining an existing one-unit dwelling, which is currently occupied by the property owners. The properties in question are in Port Williams, which is in the east end of the municipality. The approximate area is indicated by the red circle on the screen. This is an aerial photo of the subject properties. You'll see there are four properties outlined in red. The two to the rear form what used to be a sand pit. The property here is the current residence of the property owners, and this is a fourth smaller property. The total area of the properties is just over 12 acres and has a total of 825 feet of road frontage. As you can see in the photo, most of the properties, especially towards the rear, are currently forested, and the applicants and property owners have indicated that the vast majority of this vegetation is proposed to be retained. This is a different view of the property. This property, you can see, or sorry, this photo shows a bit more of the topography of the site. You can see that along Belcher, the topography is somewhat higher, the elevation, and it slopes downward as you move south towards the Cornwallis River. You can also see the former sand pit operation much better in this photo. This is a photo of the surrounding area. You can see that along Belcher Street, there are a number of single-family houses, as well as a large agricultural operation on the north side of Belcher Street. And we also see the Port Williams Elementary School here. This is a snapshot of the zoning of the area. So the municipality is divided into two separate main areas. The first is our rural areas, and the second are our growth centres. Council has determined that our growth centres are where we would want to see growth. And particularly higher-density urban-style growth, the growth centres typically line up with our serviced areas, although not always, as we'll see a little bit later. But typically, it is where our areas have water and/or sewer service. And the focus for these areas is on a compact community development. So the zoning map shows the boundary of the growth centre of Port Williams in orange. And you can see that outside the orange boundary is where we find all the agricultural uses, which is what is intended through the municipal planning strategy. Rural areas are meant to be agricultural or otherwise, you know, more rural in nature. And we see within the orange boundary, the zoning. So we see that our subject property is zoned R5, with two of them zoned in yellow in R3, as is the same, consistent with the surrounding area. The R3 zone is our second highest-density zone and permits apartment buildings up to eight units and would permit multiple main dwellings per property. So the area is already zoned for higher-density uses, especially with an eye towards apartment As part of processing our planning application, we did conduct public consultation. A public information meeting was posted on the municipal website in March 2022. This was a virtual public information meeting due to COVID restrictions. In terms of comments from the public, we did hear from a neighbouring farmer that expressed concerns around increased traffic, especially with regard to existing traffic issues, and he indicated that he expected it would negatively impact his farming operation. Another neighbour wrote in and echoed the same traffic concerns, along with destruction of barn swallow habitat. We did investigate the barn swallow habitat with the Department of Natural Resources, Lands and Forestry, I can't remember what it's called anymore, as well as the Nova Scotia Department of Environment and Climate Change also weighed in and indicated that a representative from the department had gone to the site and indicated that they had not seen any evidence of past or current barn swallow habitat. With regard to our policy review, our enabling policies are 3.1.13 and 3.1.14 that relate to proposals within the comprehensive neighbourhood development or R5 zone. All development within the R5 zone needs to occur by development agreement. There are very few uses permitted as of right, so all development in R5 zone requires a development agreement. And in terms of the order of the policy, I'll address 3.1.14 first and 3.1.13 afterwards. So 3.1.14 indicates that council shall consider including lands outside of the zone in the same development agreement without an amendment to the land use bylaw, so no need to rezone adjacent properties that are not within the R5 zone. In considering this addition, council shall be satisfied that the lands abut a comprehensive neighbourhood development R5 zone. So we've seen in the zoning map that the two additional properties in this application do abut an R5 zone, and that the lands in the comprehensive neighbourhood development zone, development agreement demonstrably contribute to protecting natural features, improving transportation linkages, or facilitating the development of isolated properties. So we saw that the easternmost property was a very, very thin strip of land, and we'll see later on in the presentation that this is the location for one of the driveways for the development. And in order to ensure that this area is wide enough, and potentially a subdivision may occur to increase the size of one of those parcels to enable access to the rear, where the vast majority of the development is to occur, we have included both 1207 Belcher and the skinny property to the east to ensure that adequate access can be provided. So in terms of policy 3.1.13, this states that council shall consider only by development agreement proposals for comprehensive planned neighbourhood development within the zone. In evaluating such proposals, council shall be satisfied that the proposal consists of land uses that are consistent with the intent of the residential designation, including, but not limited to, residential uses, community facilities, recreational facilities, and commercial uses intended to serve the neighbourhood. So this proposal consists of a mix of residential uses, which is the purpose of the residential designation, and the commercial use that is proposed is intended to be a neighbourhood commercial use. And we'll discuss how we're going to ensure that that happens a little bit later when we do a summary of what's permitted and what is restricted in the development agreement. Subsection B says that council shall be satisfied that the proposal contains a mix of housing options rather than only one building type. So the proposal included three different building types: apartments, two units, and one units. And so staff are satisfied that this policy has been met. The proposal is intended to have an overall minimum density of four units per acre for development serviced by central sewer and water. This proposal will be serviced by sewer and water. There is not currently central sewer service along this stretch of Belcher Street. However, the applicant and the village have been working on an agreement to provide that service. The village has indicated that the capacity of the sewer system is adequate to service this development, and they are committed to coming to an agreement with the applicant and the property owners. But that's not the purpose of the policy. The policy was density. So this application results in a density of roughly, I believe it's roughly 16 units per acre, but the development agreement itself requires a minimum density of 10 units per acre. We've provided a little bit of flexibility within the development agreement. And the rationale behind 10 units per acre is that our R1 zone, developed at one unit per lot, provides a density of roughly 10 units per acre. So the density, the required density on the subject properties is consistent with the residential one-unit or R1 zone. However, it is important to also recognise that the residential one- and two-unit zone has similar density but permits, so would permit the same number of lots with two units on each, resulting in an overall density of roughly 20 units per acre. So this proposal results in a lower density than our R2 zone. Subpolicy D says that the proposal will have a neutral or positive long-term impact on municipal finances, as shown by a fiscal impact analysis, or the community or environmental benefits outweigh the costs. So with regard to municipal and village finances, the development as proposed is estimated to generate an increase of $230,000 per year for the municipality and $90,000 per year for the village. With regards to the costs generated through this application, since no public roads are being proposed, extensive infrastructure extension does not factor into the ongoing costs for this application, and therefore, sorry, I lost my spot in my notes. So as there are no significant extensions of infrastructure, staff are confident that this would have a positive long-term impact on municipal and village finances. Subpolicy E states that council shall be satisfied that the proposal includes appropriate phasing to ensure orderly development that minimises the creation of vacant parcels of land. So the development area for this application is located behind existing development. We've not incorporated phasing into this development as a result because it is, since the development is occurring behind existing development, vacant lots can't be created. Subpolicy F states that it shall result in public infrastructure that is efficient to service and maintain. Again, there's no new road, so there's not a whole lot of new infrastructure that's being installed that would be the responsibility of the village to maintain. So staff are satisfied that this policy has been met. G states that council shall be satisfied that the proposal encourages active transportation by providing sufficient sidewalks, pathways, and/or trails consistent with the transportation infrastructure policies contained in section 2.3. There is no sidewalk on Belcher Street in proximity to the subject properties. The sidewalk ends east of the school. Sidewalks are a village responsibility. With regards to the proposal and the draft development agreement, we've written in that a pedestrian walkway is required next to all vehicular accesses, so that at such time that the village decides, or if they decide, they wish to install a sidewalk on Belcher Street, residents of this development will be able to safely access the sidewalk, any future sidewalk, from their property in a safe way. They won't have to walk through a parking lot or on a driveway. They will have their own dedicated infrastructure to safely get to the street. H states to minimise environmental impact by protecting sensitive natural features and incorporating low-impact approaches for managing stormwater. Staff were not aware of any sensitive natural features, and when one was brought to our attention, we did investigate it to the satisfaction of the provincial department having jurisdiction over that matter. And we have written into the draft development agreement that low-impact approaches are required for stormwater management. Subpolicy I states that council shall be satisfied that the proposal provides a minimum 100-foot-wide vegetative buffer within the comprehensive neighbourhood development or R5 zones adjacent to the A1 zone. So this buffer area must be entirely contained within the development and may be used for park recreation service utility purposes, but must not contain buildings for any other use. So we have required a 100-foot buffer along the western side of the subject properties. This is where the subject properties interface with the A1 zone. We've not required that the buffer area be vegetated, although it is currently vegetated, and the applicants have indicated that it is intended to stay that way. The purpose of this policy, and we'll see shortly in the Port Williams Secondary Plan, the Port Williams Secondary Plan actually informed this policy quite a lot, so there are a few similarities, one of which is this 100-foot-wide vegetative buffer. And the secondary plan states that that buffer is to minimise and mitigate any negative impacts associated with the spraying of pesticides, fertilisers, and herbicides on agricultural fields. And the property to the west of this, the subject properties, is not currently in agricultural production, so staff are not concerned with that, although again, the 100-foot buffer is required, and it is currently vegetated. Subpolicy J states that notwithstanding the minimum requirements set out in the subdivision bylaw, that the proposal provides a minimum of 10% open space contribution. So we have written in subdivision permissions within this development agreement, and at the time of subdivision, a 10% contribution will be required from the property owner. Subpolicy K states that council shall be satisfied that the proposal utilises alternative road, lot servicing, and other infrastructure standards. They have not requested any alternative standards, so none have been provided within the draft development agreement. Subpolicy L states that the proposal shall provide sufficient vehicle and pedestrian transportation linkages within any adjacent town, village, or property through the dedication of land intended for use as a road reserve. So the subject property is back on to an area that is zoned environmental constraints or O1 that does not permit any development, and then beyond that is the Cornwallis River. So there's no vehicle and pedestrian transportation linkages have been provided from the subject properties to Belcher Street, but that is the only reasonable access within the subject properties. So no road reserves have been required, as well, there are no new public roads proposed. Subpolicy M indicates that council shall be satisfied that this complements existing and planned development within adjacent town or village, and any linkages are appropriate as well. So we're not aware of any planned or in-progress development in proximity to this one that would be inconsistent with the proposed development, but I would remind everyone that we did discuss the zoning in the surrounding area, and it is zoned for apartment buildings up to eight units. So it has been contemplated that higher-density development will occur in this area in the future. And subpolicy N states that it shall meet the general development agreement criteria contained in section 5.3, and we'll go over that in a moment. But in terms of how this meets our overall vision, goals, and objectives of our municipal planning strategy, when we look to our vision statements under settlement, we're meant to concentrate new commercial and residential development, including mixed uses in the growth centres. We're meant to encourage efficient service and infrastructure delivery. We're meant to enable and encourage a diversity of housing throughout the region. So Port Williams, especially in this area, is characterised primarily by low-density housing forms, one- and two-unit dwellings. This would go a long way to increasing the diversity of housing within the growth centre of Port Williams. Within our growth centre objectives, under transportation, we're meant to promote the development of compact, complete communities with accessible and active transportation options. The proposal also includes a walking trail throughout the site to be used by residents, and we have required sidewalks along the vehicular accesses. This is a compact community, and it does contain a variety of building types and includes a commercial use, which will assist in creating a complete community in this area of Port Williams. Within our residential objectives, we're meant to accommodate a wide range of housing options, including opportunities for mixed uses and increased densities in areas where urban services are efficient to deliver and to provide a wide range of housing choices, including affordable housing. Port Williams also has a secondary plan that dates from 2010, and so we'll take you through the policies, the relevant policies within that document as well. And many of them are similar to the ones we've just reviewed, so we may go just a little quicker. First policy that's relevant is that council shall require all new development within the growth centre to be serviced by central water and sewer services. So that is in the works between the property owner and the village. This is not a municipal jurisdiction. Both the water and sewer system in Port Williams are owned and operated by the village. They are the jurisdiction having authority over that, those matters. Within the residential section of the secondary plan, we see as a goal to accommodate residential growth that meets the needs of residents from all ages, all stages and ages of life. So what that typically means is that sometimes we call it aging in place, but it's the concept that an individual should be able to be born and die in the same community without ever having to leave it due to a lack of an appropriate housing choice. So when we think about apartment buildings, typically those residents tend to be people who have just left the family home, they're starting out on their adult lives, or they may be older individuals who are looking to downsize and don't want the responsibility of caring for a property or a large home. We also see that we're intended to direct higher-density developments to central locations. So whether this development is considered higher density or not is somewhat subjective when we think about our as-of-right density permissions in our land use bylaw. But in terms of, so this is again the zoning map for Port Williams, and this is the intersection of Highway 358 and Belcher Street. And what we see here are residential subdivisions, R1-zoned land that are currently developed with one-unit dwellings. These date from the 80s, 90s, and 2000s, so these are relatively recent subdivisions. And along Highway 358, we see similarly, small lots developed with one unit or one building. All of these grey dots on the map, you can't really see them, they're civic numbers. So if there's one grey dot, typically there's one unit on the property. So along the Highway 358, we do see some older buildings. However, they are well-maintained, they're currently in use. To direct higher-density development towards the core of Port Williams would require extensive land assembly. And, sorry, I lost my place again. Directing higher-density development towards the core of Port Williams would require significant land assemblies, that would require a single owner or owners to purchase many lots to consolidate them into one larger lot. But we don't see the conditions that typically merit that type of activity. When we see properties that are well-maintained, still in very good use and of an age, that don't merit redevelopment, it would take a significant amount of time for the density, a similarly-sized proposal to assemble the amount of land required within the core to enable this type of development. But at the same time, I don't need to remind everyone that we are in a housing crisis, and we do need residential development, and this development is consistent with the, in terms of density, with as-of-right development on these properties. 4.5.24 of the Port Williams Secondary Plan relates to the development of R5 zones. The R5 zone used to be called the R10 zone and was created through the Port Williams Secondary Plan in 2010. So again, these policies may be similar. So we're meant to, council shall consider only by development agreement in the comprehensive neighbourhood development or R5 zone, residential development, which is sympathetic to neighbouring farms and will not interfere with normal agricultural activities. farms and will not interfere with normal agricultural activities. In considering such development agreements, council shall be satisfied that the density of the overall development is a minimum of four units per acre. So we've already gone over this, it is a minimum of 10 units per acre, and that development of the area shall be phased in such a manner to allow the largest amount of agricultural land to remain in production as long as possible. These properties are not currently in agricultural production, so this policy does not apply. C, a separation distance of a minimum of 100 feet or 30.5 meters shall be maintained between any residential building and land actively used for cropland, and 600 feet shall be maintained between any residential building and land used for intensive livestock operation. So this is a map of the area again. I've outlined, as we've mentioned before, there is a large agricultural operation on the north side of Belcher Street, and I, I highlighted a couple of areas in this operation. The first is this field outlined in yellow. This would be the area, the closest area that could be cropped. It is roughly 250 feet from the closest area of development, so overdouble the requirement in the policy. And the closest building that could house livestock on the property is outlined in black, and it is over 650 feet away from the area proposed to be developed. So this policy contemplates the potential impact on agricultural operations, and the policy has been exceeded. D, that any required vegetative buffer shall include plant material that will grow to an approximate height of 20 feet or more in order to minimize the spread of fertilizer, pesticides, and other sprays. So as I discussed earlier, there is no agricultural activity occurring to the, to the west, the property of budding that's in the A1 zone, however, again, it is currently vegetated, and that is proposed to stay. Subpolicy E indicates that vehicle access onto Collins Road is not permitted. This application is not on Collins Road, so this does not apply. Subsection F indicates that higher-density areas are centrally located while lower-density areas are located towards the growth center fringe, so we, we did discuss this as well. While this is certainly occurring in a, typically in a larger building than we might expect, it is occurring at a density that is consistent with our as-of-right lower-density development. So again, this is a bit subjective, but staff are confident that this application, this proposal is appropriate for this area. That the proposed design and maintenance adequately protect any identified wellfields. This proposal isn't located in a wellfield, and so this policy doesn't apply either. H and I pertain to open space dedication and require an open space dedication that is less than the current policy in the MPS, so we've required a 10% dedication, meaning that H and I are no longer applicable. J, in addition to any other information required, developers shall prepare a groundwater study for proposals located within wellfield zones A and B. Again, there's no wellfield here, so this doesn't apply. And the final, the proposal meets the general development criteria set out in section 5.3, Development Agreements and Amendment in the Land Use Bylaw, and at this time, we will go over that policy. So council is intended to be satisfied that the proposal is in keeping with the intent of the municipal planning strategy. We've just gone over the relevant policies of the municipal planning strategy, and staff are of the opinion that it is in keeping with the intent, that the financial impact on the municipality will be positive, and we are confident that that will occur as well. Land use compatibility, staff are confident that in light of the surrounding zoning, as well as the, the nature of the subject properties, that this will be compatible with surrounding development. The adequacy and proximity of school, recreation, and community facilities. Staff did consult with the local school board, and they indicated that while the Port Williams Elementary School is nearing capacity, that they will be able to accommodate any new students. The creation of traffic hazards or congestion. So the applicant did prepare a traffic study, and this was sent off to the authority-having jurisdiction, being the Department of Public Works, who reviewed the traffic study and did not have any concerns and agreed with the findings. The adequacy of fire protection, staff consulted with the Port Williams Fire Chief, and he indicated that they would be able to service properties. The adequacy of water and sewer services, again, the village was consulted, and they did indicate that sewer and water services were adequate to service this development. The potential for flooding or serious drainage problems, again, staff are not concerned about flooding or drainage problems. The draft development agreement does require low-impact approaches to stormwater management, and we are confident that stormwater will be able to be contained on-site in an appropriate way. Pollution, including soil erosion, siltation of watercourses at the time of development, all erosion and, and development will be required to follow the provincial guidelines on erosion. Negative impacts on neighboring farming operations, again, staff are, don't believe that any negative impacts will result on the farming operations. One aspect of this that has been raised, has been the traffic, and I, I did mean to address this at the time, but this area is, it can experience high traffic in part around school times, in the morning and the evening, when students are arriving or leaving from school. So there, there is traffic, but it is contained to those times, and it is important to note in terms of traffic hazards, there is a school zone that starts just at this subject property. So the, the speed limit drops from 80 to 50 to 30 in close, fairly quickly, but it is 30 by the time you, you are at the subject properties, so, and again, the responsibility for these matters would fall to the provincial Department of Public Works, and I'm sure they are, they are well-aware of this issue, and, and they did not indicate even still that there were any concerns. And then the suitability of the site in terms of grade soils and geologic conditions. Staff are confident that it, it is suitable for development. So a summary of the development agreement, the part we've all been waiting for. So the development agreement permits up to 210 residential units with a minimum density of 10 units per acre. It does require a mix of housing types, although it is not limited to the three multi-unit dwellings. It could occur in buildings, in any type of building, provided it does not exceed a 70-unit apartment building or five stories. The development agreement permits a commercial development in accordance with the mixed commercial residential zone, so this is our current neighborhood commercial zone. It's, it's been developed to operate in proximity to residential uses, and so the commercial use on the property will be required to follow the regulations associated with the mixed commercial residential zone. This permits commercial uses like retail stores, restaurants, and smaller, smaller commercial uses that have lower impacts than, than we might see in our general commercial or C1 zone. The development agreement's below and above-grade parking structures and establishes restrictions on how close those structures can get to lot lines, and it, it regulates subdivision in accordance with the residential multi-unit or R4 zone. This is a site plan for the proposed development. We see an access here on the east side, and there's a second access proposed on the west, and this area in the middle is intended to be where the bulk of the development occurs with the neighborhood commercial use closer to Belcher Street here. The site plan also shows the existing vegetation and indicates existing tree buffer to remain, although it has indicated that that is approximate. In terms of additional requirements, under the development agreement, we have required a 100-foot buffer along the western property line. We've required 100 square feet of amenity space per unit in addition to the walking trails proposed on-site. We've required low-impact stormwater management approaches and that 10% open space dedication. In terms of our process, we sent out 12 letters to notify residents of the public hearing, not the public information meeting. And in terms of our process, we did, we did an online PIM. We've performed our staff review. We took this to the Area Advisory Committee on May 3rd, and the Planning Advisory Committee on May 9th, I believe, and council gave it initial consideration at its meeting last month, and we are here at the public hearing with final consideration to occur this evening and potentially a 14-day appeal period following that. And now I'll pass it back to the mayor for comments from the public.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. Before we do that, are there any questions of clarification that any councillor wishes to ask Ms. Moser? I see no other councillor has a question of clarification. I was just, I had a note regarding the sidewalk, and you explained that. And I had a note regarding access and egress, but there's going to be a, a road on each side, east and west?
A driveway, yes.
A driveway.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And that was my, my last note, was these are not public roads.
That's correct.
So they're not maintained by us, they're maintained by the developer?
That's correct.
And the appropriate drainage systems will go in along those roads, will it? Or is the drainage going to be handled on-site?
The drainage is intended to be handled on-site.
Okay. Thank you. Those were all my questions. Is there any member of the public, well, Mr. Newcomb first? If you'd like to come forward? If you just, as, as people come forward, if they wouldn't mind just introduce, if it's for the record, I mean, we might know who you are, but this is for the record. So if you'd introduce yourself and your place of residence, then?
Yeah, my name's Brian Newcomb. I live on Tush Street, and we farm across the road from this proposed. There should be a PowerPoint.
You have a PowerPoint. Is, is the clerk working on that? Who's working on that? You, you have it, okay. There we go. Try that, Mr. Newcomb, it sums up, yes, good, okay.
All right, first I'd like to thank council and the mayor for giving us the opportunity to speak about this application. When I first heard about the sand pit being developed, I imagined a similar development of Collins Road, maybe single-story, split homes, for sale or rent, not this behemoth 200-unit development in the heart of agricultural land. But no one seems to want to mention or even talk about the elephant in the room. On paper, it's just numbers. It's a zone on a map. It is not until you look visually at the area to see fully with the impact that this proposal has on local residents and the farming operation. At the virtual public meeting, we heard about the needs for development, new housing, and tax revenue. You know what else people need to survive is food. Where does food come from? Comes from farmers. Food does not appear on shelves by itself. And what do we need to produce food? We need fertile land, we need barns, we need agriculture infrastructure, we need support for the egg business, and most of all, we need farmers. A report by RBC states that the Canadian egg industry is headed for a shortage of farmers and labors, and that the ones that are left are getting older with the average age of 56. We need more farmers, we need younger farmers coming into the industry, we need to create an inviting environment for them to work in, not a more difficult one. So how do we keep farmers, do we have now, and attract new ones, new generations to farming? It's not by making farming harder or more stressful than it already is. Farming by nature is a stressful occupation. You plant a crop, not necessarily knowing if you have enough rain or enough sun to get the crop harvested, or you have a buyer for that product. Do you have, or do you have a buyer for that product? Do farming activities at all hours of the day, trying to work with mother nature to get the crop planted, then hoping for good weather to harvest to get a good quality crop? In livestock operations, you have animals present 365 days a year, you need to tend to with the smells and the activities associated with them, and all these things are a lot of the time what the average citizen wants to live beside. Despite the best management practices available to farmers, we still have manure spells, flies, noise, large farm equipment at all hours of the day. In the letter we sent, our farmers sent on the proposal, we laid out concerns regarding traffic and conflicting uses, and suggest that this application does not fit the existing activities and characters of the rural agriculture area in the western Port Williams. Some might try to argue that since there's already some houses in the area, that it's okay for this project. On the virtual public information meeting, Hayden Hopgood mentioned that they've watched the growth center of the eastern side of the community grow with the Port Pub, Collins Road Development, and would like to build a small community, or what more looks like a small village, on this folks' land. But there's one major difference, the land bordering on the east side of Port Williams, on Collins Road, is all farmland, while the west side of Port Williams, surrounding the development property in all directions, is farmland and high-density agriculture, So let's first do the math in this application. How will this application affect the farming operation, local residents, and the grand size of this development on the very rural western Port Williams? Currently, I counted, not including the farmhouse, I counted residents. So from the development, going east to High Street, there's 12 single housing units, and going from development up to Watuka Farms, there's 11. So that's a total of 23 units. 23 units, if we average three people a unit, that's 69 people. And let's average 1.5 cars per household, which is probably pretty accurate, that's 34 cars, 34 and a half. Let's look at this proposed development, 200 units, that's average of three person per unit, 600 people. And 1.5 vehicles per unit, 300 more cars. This is increase of cars and peoples of 1,150% over the existing residents and cars in the area right now. Double parking at the school and traffic, increased traffic congestion. If there's any elementary school function on, forget about trying to get any piece of equipment down the double-parked street, praying not to meet another car coming the other way, while then add another 300 local cars through the wits, just to forget about trying to get down that road. This is the last day of school when everyone was leaving. This is not like a assembly or the other functions they have, where they're double-parked from High Street right down to Sutton Road. This is nothing compared to what those are like. Okay, if you Google the population of Port Williams, it shows the population of Port Williams in 2016 was 1,120, covering area of 2.930 meters squared, 209,30,000, any of the zero up there. This new high-density development adds 600 people in an area of 42,536 meters squared. So let's make sure we all understand what we're proposing here. This development will increase Port Williams' population by 53% on a piece of land that's 70 times smaller than the growth center itself. It's located beside a high-density livestock operation. So I'll stop it there to let that sink in first. 50% increase, 70 times smaller than the growth center, beside high-density livestock operation. You can't really understand the effect that the application would have on existing farming operations unless you can see it visually on a map. So this is the map of the area that we're talking about. Within 850 meters surrounding this proposed development, on all four sides is agricultural activity. To the far west, Upwind, Watuka Farm, a large dairy and poultry farm surrounded by farmland where they need to spread, spread their livestock manure. 670 meters away is Embry's High Density Orchard Farm. 450 meters away, Upwind, is our poultry barns and manure storage. 150 meters, probably less than that, across from where they say there's no agriculture, but right across from the driveway, is prime agricultural land. It's a large block of land that we spread manure throughout the year depending on the crop that we grow. 310 meters away, there's two more chicken barns. 300 meters away is our dairy barn and manure storage. 375 meters away is another chicken barn, another manure storage. And to the east of the other, is another barn 450 meters away. Surrounded the whole property, all agriculture, high-density agriculture. Surrounded the whole property, all agriculture, high density agriculture, livestock. So in total, we have eight poultry barns, 10 dairy livestock barns, a total of 30 agricultural structures, manure storages, 100 acres of prime farmland, to spread all our livestock manure, to grow the crops we need, to supply the food that everyone enjoys. So I'm sure councillors themselves would do have smell complaints or smell complaints. We do. Last year, we had an odor complaint from a new resident in the area, who maybe when they moved here thinking it was great to live in the rural countryside, not realizing until later that there are things that come with living in the countryside, and wanting us to change our daily activity, activities we have been doing here for the last 262 Let's take that one complaint from that one resident in the area and times that by 600, from the majority of people who probably never lived in the country before. Now how do I know about odors? My house on Tush Street, I'm only 75 meters away, Upwind, from the barn, and a hot summer day, I know I'm living in the country. So it makes me wonder what the planners were thinking when writing up this report and the application. Where in the King's County and Reston planning does the state or even recommend its great strategy to place high density housing in the middle of high density livestock? Because I must have missed that section. Do the planners even realize that the land surrounding this RF5 has two high density livestock operations, a high density orchard, all upwind of this potential site? Do they even realize that? In the virtual presentation, the planners mentioned many times during this pictures about the physical characteristics of the RF5 property that could shelter and create a buffer between the development and the existing Port Williams community. Excuse me. Later, we mentioned again about buffering the new development against existing residents and development along Belcher Street. Really? This was their biggest concern? Hey, I'm all for buffering existing residents from this new beehive that's going to come. But how about the three large farms surrounding the development? No word of them? No red flags here? I would think zoning one-on-one, on the first day, you would learn you don't mix two conflicting I am sure that all councillors know this already. You can just look at the zoning map to understand the potential impacts. And all it's just suggesting is a little sand berm and a thin line of trees. That some will be cut down for the commercial lot is going to create a great buffer from the country's odors, flies and farming activities? It's a joke to think that this is going to buffer anything. And I heard you speak earlier, I find it ironic that they require a 100-foot vegetative buffer to protect the development from our sprays, our fertilizers, but nothing to protect us from the new 600 people that's going to move there.
I realize you appreciate what he's saying, but you can understand where we're going to end up if we start this at this stage of the game, so I'd appreciate it if you would do that.
Let's make sure that we understand what we're proposing.
And if you just bear with me for a sec. And while I'm at the decorum thing, if you're speaking, I would appreciate it if you'd address council and not anyone else in the room.
I'm not addressing him, I'm just...
And I'm not suggesting you are, sir, I'm just, I want to just lay the ground rules before people get to the mic. Okay, sorry to interrupt.
This application makes no planning or even common sense. Here is a map of the Port Williams Growth Center and boundary. Most of the growth center is to the east of our farm and the A1 zone. The village septic line ends at the Port Williams School. At the very right thumb of the west end of the growth boundary, you have the school, some low density housing, and a sand pit, all surrounded by A1 zone. Yes, the county put RF5 zone here, outside the main growth center, no septic, and an agricultural area, which did make sense at the time and still doesn't now. But that does not mean that they intended for this lot to become a new village. Even just cropping beside fields like the one on our field on Planters Square limits what we, what, how, when we farm activities, and Planters Square is only small compared to this new proposal. If Port Williams wants to increase its population by 50%, increase its revenue, then this project makes sense. If it was built maybe at the old Trugain feed site, in the middle of the growth center, where there's already existing infrastructure, where there's sidewalks, mixed commercial, restaurants, residential housing, and moving traffic away from the school zone. Not only that, there is another three, four-story apartment building, 127 units, proposed for Collins Road application, with another 29 one-unit dwellings that will make us make use of existing infrastructure and generate lots of revenue for the village. That's another 156 units that aren't in a high density livestock area, are being applied for on Collins Road. In the end, council, we have to make a decision on what is the right fit for this rural area. Just remember that this decision will not, will have long lasting effects on the current and future farming operations and any new residents. These effects will be long, these effects will be here long after developers have sold their last unit and taken their profits. The new owners and renters may not be happy to deal with the smells, noises and farming activities, and the farmers having to deal with the nuisance complaints, the restrictions to their daily activities, the stresses, the time and the costs that are associated with them. For people to think that just because the housing development may be odorous site and suggests that a row of trees and a pile of sand will buffle the smells, flies and other activities, they don't know how stuff flies through the air, do they? Make sure, don't make this mistake, match the housing development size and density to compatible areas with the same uses. Now, I don't need to tell this council how costly, time consuming, and stressful smell complaints can be to yourself and your staff. All you have to do is look across the river to the minus and see what a headache odors issues can be when you have a large number of citizens close to or downwind from an odor, people do not want to smell when they're barbecuing in their backyard. And you're getting this from complaints from the people who are the original source of the smell. How many calls, letters, emails to this county seat over the past years? Five, 10, hundreds? Now just imagine if that odor wasn't coming from the source, from the people who made it. But what if it was coming from individual business instead? How difficult would that be to operate? Wouldn't you be concerned? I know I'd be concerned. Okay, let's look at this proposal differently then. Let's take the same scenario, but move it across the river, where instead the local farmers, it's the county council. This is your operation. You own the lagoons. And that is, let's say they want to put a new development beside your lagoons. Population in the minus is 5100 in 2011, they want to increase it by 50%, they want to put 2,600 people development there. Let's have a show of hands, how many councillors would approve this project? A project that would increase the minus by 50% only 300 to 850 meters away from your operation, which is the same as Port Williams. Why not put it here? You need more housing. You have sewer and water available. It checks all the boxes, right? And it could make you a lot of tax money. What, no hands? Of course not, because you would never allow it to pass. You would never subject yourself to this type of constant complaints and stress. It would be negligent on your behalf to do this to yourself. Plus, it'd make no common sense. Oh, but it's okay to subject other farmers to the same scenario because it's their problem, not yours. There are many other great examples of better locations for large scale development, like this four apartment building across the research station. A seven apartment beside King's Tech, do you see any cows, any chicken barns, any manure storages in this picture? No, it makes perfect sense. But this one here does not make sense. So where else in King's County has this council and planters thought it would be a good planning strategy to plant high density housing and high density livestock together? Are there other examples of this project of the size and scale and of two totally opposing activities placed in such close proximity? Can you give me one example in King's County? No? How about one example in Nova Scotia? Okay, let's go a little bigger. How about one example in all of Canada has placed 200 apartment buildings in the middle of a high density livestock area? And this application goes against multiple MPS policies. 5.3.7, this failed a number of points. Land use compatibility, high density housing beside high density livestock, I've already talked about this, big fail. Creation of traffic hazard and congestion. When combining school activities to other current traffic flows, then you add another 300 cars on top of that, that's not helping congestion or traffic. And this is the big one. I repeat, negative impact on neighboring farming operations. There are three farming operations significantly impacted by this proposal. Huge red flag, huge big fail. And I'm sure there's others on the list, but those are the only three that I wanted to bring up, I only have so much time. So in conclusion, these types of high density developments can go many places as we've seen in earlier examples. It is easy to direct the scale of development to the appropriate location now before it is built. But the farmers on Belcher Street, we have no such option. We can't pick up our buildings, our livestock, our lands and our history and move elsewhere. We and other firms have invested millions in our farming operations and contribute millions to the local economy every year. Our family have been farming this original farmstead since 1761, 262 years. We can't pick up and move. We are a part of this community, we give farm tourists to school kids so they better understand where our food comes from and the importance of food, local food production. We donated lands for the soccer and baseball field so the kids would have, the kids in the community would have a safe place to play. And all we ask in return is if this council holds up their commitment to there, all of our agricultural industry, avoid conflicting uses. Let farmers do what they do best and farm. And you can do what you do best, follow your MPS, and not allow large scale developments that can negatively impact farming operations. If you are trying to discourage current, new and next generation firms who do not want to farm, just keep making it harder, just keep making it harder and more stressful for them. Adopt conflicting using strategy throughout the whole county as your new King's County model. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newcombe. Did anyone else wish to present to council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. If you'd just introduce yourself for the record, please.
For the record, my name is Cindy McDonald. My family and I have lived in Port Williams for the last 21 years. We have paid residential taxes to the county for 21 years. The maps that have been produced in support of this development would have you believe that we live on a cornfield or in a pasture, because our lot is zoned as agricultural. In fact, we live on the property immediately adjacent to the proposed site of 210 apartment units, three six-story apartment buildings and a retail establishment. The buildings could be as close as 100 feet from our property line, underground parking within 30 feet, and walking trails as close as 10 feet. Again, this is not a cornfield. This is our yard, a place where my late husband and I raised two children and where I hope to live out my days in peace. However, all that changed when just over a year ago, I arrived home from work on a Thursday afternoon to find Brad and Connie Hopgood and their son Hayden in the ditch near my mailbox. When I stopped to inquire as to what they might be doing, they indicated that they were looking for the property line. After a short conversation, it was revealed to me that they had plans to build a 200-unit apartment complex on their property next to mine. I was floored by the news. I discovered that the buildings would be as, the buildings could be as close as 100 feet to our land. Connie went on to suggest that the units would be geared to housing seniors, since it had always been a dream of hers to help seniors in the area have access to housing, despite the fact that there is no reference to seniors' housing in the plans. While trying to get my mind around the scale of the operation, I said that I was not looking forward to having hundreds of residents wandering across our lawn, and indicated that there had to be a fence at the very least, if this was going to become a reality. Brad Hopgood assured me that they would build a fence to ease my concerns. Again, I see no reference to a fence in the proposed plans. So with a walking path as close as 10 feet from my property, I expect there will be countless people walking their dogs near our property, leaving dog waste to accumulate along with other garbage. In fact, because you can't see our house from the street, I have learned that I must mow the lawn all the way down to the street so that people will be less likely to throw garbage in my yard as they drive by, thinking that no one lives there. At the very least, a fence that is agreeable to both the developer and my family must be included in the drawings prepared by the developer to separate the development from my yard, as was offered by Brad Hopgood. It doesn't surprise me that there was no evidence of bank swallows, and to correct, it is bank swallows that I was referring to, not barn swallows. So I would suggest that perhaps the county go back and do more investigating as to bank swallows and not barn swallows. There is no barn on that property, but there was indeed a very large sandbank. My, the bank swallows were definitely there. My children loved to look at them on their way to school. Their nests peppered the sandbank immediately behind the Hopgads' house. Until one day, an excavator or a bulldozer came through and eliminated any trace of the protected species. The sand pit was not operational at the time, and there was no sand being trucked out. So I can only imagine that the nesting site was eviscerated to eliminate any hurdles to the development process. I'm not a hard-nosed environmentalist, but I do respect when a species has been identified as protected, and I would ask that the county do the same. In terms of developing existing trails, the only paths on the property were made by my husband so that our children could walk through the woods to the elementary school. Not because it was an idyllic little walk for the kids, it was out of necessity. The school bus refused to stop at our driveway because of our proximity to the school. And yet the traffic on Belcher Street and the absence of a sidewalk made it unsafe for them to walk to school on the busy thoroughfare at 8:00 AM in the morning. In the last 10 years or so, Canada Post has even refused to deliver to the mailbox at the foot of our driveway out of concern for their employees' safety along the busy stretch of Belcher Street, which of course is further complicated by the Sutton Road intersection and the sharp turn. I'm sure other residents in attendance this evening will echo my concerns about traffic. Often, when I come home and stop to make the left-hand turn to go up my driveway, I have to brace myself for the possible impact of cars speeding up as they leave the elementary school in their rearview mirror. school in their rearview mirror. My son and his friend were rear-ended at the foot of my driveway. I have even exited my driveway into the right-hand lane towards the school only to come face-to-face with a car trying to pass on the sharp turn on a double line. I am not opposed to development and recognize the need for housing. However, I could go on about all the reasons I feel this development is wrong for this particular area. I have raised concerns specific to my situation. I will allow others to speak to the negative effects it will have on the residents of Port Williams in general and indeed anyone who has the occasion to travel Belcher Street, work our farms, or attend or work at the elementary school. Please consider voting no on this proposal. I know it would appear that the developers have checked off numerous tick boxes to satisfy council and that $230 in annual tax revenue is very attractive. However, I am not confident that their studies have been completed by independent review. These so-called experts do not live here and are no doubt anxious to deliver a positive report to those funding the studies. As a private citizen, I do not have the financial means to refute their claims. And unfortunately, here we are on July 4th at a time when most people are on vacation. Most people don't even know that this meeting is happening. 12 households within 500 feet of the development were notified. The Newcombe firm alone fronts on approximately 800 feet on the north side of Belcher. I received the letter advising of this meeting at 4:30 PM on Monday, June 26th, five business days before this meeting. Hardly time to launch a fair opposition, let alone prepare a comprehensive PowerPoint presentation. I was not even permitted to post on the Port Williams Elementary School Facebook page as this was viewed as a community initiative, which I understand. However, no doubt, there are parents of hundreds of elementary school students just down the street who have no idea this is happening. As a result, I feel that all this is happening under a veil of secrecy. I can assure you that most of the people we've been in contact, that we've been able to make contact with in the last five or six days are opposed to the development. They have simply not had adequate time to adjust their schedules to accommodate this meeting or to prepare a response. And I speak for people like Clinton Cogswell, who owns the property on the east side of the development. He is not able to be here because he's a long-haul trucker and he has not been able to accommodate the meeting with such short notice. Please consider the voices of those who are not able to be heard today and vote no to this proposal for the safety of our children and the preservation of our village. Approving a development of this scale will forever change the village of Port Williams as we know it. There will be no turning back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Good evening. My name is Leigh Fellows, and I live on 1270 Belcher Street. For reference, that's the White House across from the elementary school. I did not get a letter. So I am very much going by the seat of my pants today because I just got noticed yesterday. I work in Nova Scotia Health. I'm also a member of the Canadian Armed Forces. I am all in support of the idea of growing a community. However, coming from Nova Scotia Health especially in a health crisis that we're in, to add 600-plus potential people right down the street from me scares me. It scares me because of our hospital, and it scares me for the traffic, it scares me for so many reasons. Our hospital now is running low, so are we going to add another EHS truck to this list? Because we might need one just for this facility, especially if it's carrying more of a different elderly demographic as it was mentioned. The traffic is an understatement of a problem. I've had to pick up my 12-year-old Cavalier King Charles and sprint across the street as someone was coming down Belcher and clearly not listening to that school zone. And like I said, I live across the street from a school. I think not only do we need to consider that, but the street is not well-accommodated at high peak or low peak when it comes to traffic. You park on the side of the road and it becomes one lane. It is not maintained, even though we have sent multiple emails. And as someone who is an avid triathlete, I have biked the road and almost gone into the cow field actually because of traffic. Port Williams is known, I moved down here because Port Williams is known to be a smaller, beautiful community across the river from New Minas and Wolfville and Kentville that's growing. It is a farming community. That's why I moved here. I brought my father down here. He bought one of the new duplexes. He would be here today. So the idea of expanding is not appropriate in so many different ways. And that's why I plead that we think about what that's going to do to the community that we are priding ourselves of being. Port Williams is priding itself of being a community of farming and the world colliding together. And now we're going to be adding more danger, more stress, and we're actually going to deter from what Port Williams is known for. So that's the pieces I'm bringing is to contemplate what stress that's going to be bringing into our Port Williams economy. The infrastructure, good luck getting like passed on to that old highway by Noodle Guy on a good day, especially with truckers. And think about our community members that were here to serve that didn't get a letter, which was majority of them who don't get to speak today unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nancy Handrigan, and my husband Peter Oleskevich wasn't sure if you were coming here. We live on Belcher Street as well at 1143, and I would really like to thank our neighbors for being here to speak in opposition to the proposed development. Much appreciation to those who prepared a presentation, which I did not, and I learned a lot especially from Mr. Newcombe. So really appreciate that. I'm not going to repeat much of what's been said in terms of concerns around traffic, infrastructure, emergency services. Certainly putting a high-density development in the middle of a farm doesn't make a lot of sense to me. We do have a petition that's been signed by, just in 24 hours, 125 people, which I can leave a copy with you and will continue to collect names. I think it's pretty simple. If council would like to follow the policies, it seems to me we're directly across from the livestock on the corner, the, the field on the corner of Sutton Road and Belcher Street. I think that is the closest to this proposed development, and it's too close according to the policy. So it seems to me a pretty easy answer if we're just looking at the policy alone. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Handrigan. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add one more thing about the traffic because when we moved...
Sorry, just, just...
Sorry.
For the purposes of the record, I know...
Oh, Peter Oleskevich, 1143 Belcher Street, two properties west of the proposed development.
Thank you.
You may remember, Peter, 10 years ago when we moved here, you and I had many conversations on the phone about the traffic problem because it was still 80 kilometers an hour there and then suddenly dropped to 50 and 30. It took us seven years to get it reduced to 50 in front of our house. And then, is it possible to put that map up, the last one you had up? There is one thing, I, I'm sorry if I don't believe the Ministry of Transportation, there we are. So if, where the 600 and 300 is the proposed, just slightly under the 150 is where we live to the south of Belcher Street. And you can see that it's a blind bend. People come around there and you cannot see what's on the other side. So our daughter went to Port Williams from grade one and all the way to grade six, and now she's going to Horton and has to take a bus. She was too close to the school. The school board said, no, you can't take the bus. And we insisted, it's 80 kilometers an hour, it's too dangerous for an eight-year-old to walk to school. So they eventually relented, and they now have a school bus stop at the bottom of our driveway. But still, there are children who have to come from the proposed, north of the proposed development to our driveway. So if we're going to add another 300 cars to that, it's just as dangerous. And the school board wouldn't put a bus stop there because they said it was too dangerous because of that blind curve. Anyway, it's all been said. I think we all know that there has to be development, there has to be more room for people to live. And Port Williams is a beautiful place. This just seems extreme to put this many people in such a small space surrounded by farmland. And one last thing, if you look directly down south, so the Ministry of the Environment, I would also disagree with because directly south of the 150 meters, my wife used to walk along the dikes there and, and all the way to the bridge. That is no longer possible because of the erosion by the river. So things are getting worse by the river. So the environmental sensitivity problem is one that needs to be evaluated a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Robert Crew, and I'm a brand-new resident here. I, I don't feel qualified to speak to a lot of the things that I've heard tonight, although I agree with everything that, that Mr. Newcombe and everyone else has said. But what I can speak to is what it's like to live in an apartment building like this. I sold my home a few years ago and moved into an 80-unit building, not unlike what's being described here in Halifax. And I moved here to get away from that. I now hear birds and animals in the morning and trees and wind. And I used to wake up and, just a week ago, and all I heard was trucks backing up and traffic and noise. And I don't think that's the quality of life that people want when they move here. I certainly didn't. I moved here to get away from the congestion of the city. And I moved into that apartment temporarily with the understanding that it was a sacrifice temporarily for a certain period of time. And it was next to everything. I could walk to Bear's Lake and have ample shopping, and there were all kinds of services that were designed for that. It was next to other apartments like that in an area that was designed for that kind of infrastructure and congestion with lots of access, lots of multi-lane highways. Not this. This is a rural area. Before I lived in the city, I lived in a small area in Newfoundland, and I always desired to move back to a place like that, like this. And now I'm here and you're bringing the city back with it. And it's not fun. I, I would rather it be kept more aligned with the way it is. And while there is a housing cross, crisis that I'm not qualified to, to fix, I don't think this is the answer because what I've not heard in any of this, this, this presentation here is that there is a commitment to keep the apartments affordable because nothing about apartment living is affordable. The rents are higher than mortgages, and it, it just pushes the problem further down the line in my opinion. So thank you for hearing me. I, I would encourage you all to strongly encourage voting against this because I don't think it's in the best interest of the quality of life here. And it goes ever, against everything of all the reasons why I choose, chose, sorry, to move here in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
My name's David Newcombe, 48 Sutton Road. I'm also a part of the Newcombe family that farms across the road on the 10th generation. So I'd like to talk about some of my concerns with the three, five-story apartment buildings. And again, while we're not against development, I think this is too intensive of development for this kind of area. When I looked at the county's AC report, they refer to the lands west and north being inactive agriculture productions. But if you look dead south, that is also a field of ours that is inactive production as well. So I think that one got missed. In your bylaws, bylaw 105 of the municipal planning strategy states that negative impacts on neighboring farm operations. And I think it's been pretty well brought tonight about a lot of those concerns. Sorry, a lot of this has already been hit on, so I'll try to not do too much of it. I also would agree with all the traffic concerns. I mean, we live across the road and it's a nightmare. I know as mentioned that a lot of the traffic is during the drop-off and pickup for school. Well, that's also during our main business hours. So we're trying to use those times as well. And I would imagine for a lot of the people living in this area who would go to work, that's when they're going to be coming in and out a lot as well. So that time that's really bad is only going to get worse, and it's going to be a lot of extra traffic. I know my neighbors who live right across from me, I noticed that they were driving their kids to the school at Port Williams. And so I asked them one day and said, well, we can't let them walk, it's just not safe going down Sutton Road and across Belcher. Traffic's too bad, there's no sidewalks. So we let them walk across the farm because, you know, we care about the safety of our As my uncle talked about, the nuisance complaints, we're worried about that being a lot of increasing due to the fact that there's going to be noise, there's going to be odors, dust, everything else. And the more people that you put right across some intensive livestock, it's only going to increase the odds that this happens. I'll also say that over the last number of years, we've had a lot of people pull in to our cow pasture and interact with our cows, not knowing how to safely be with these animals. See it all the time. When we had sunflowers as a cover crop one year in our field, we had tons of people helping themselves into our field and going through. The more people that live right in our area, the higher chance this is going to happen. As well, I know they were talking about having nature trails on site, and I am concerned that on these nature trails, it's a short little walk down to our fields on the dike too. And what's to stop someone from thinking that's part of the trail? And then they're going to be down on our land, on our private property, in our field, potentially damaging crops. And so again, that's another, another concern. Bylaw 105 also talks about there being development which is limited to small-scale rural retail and business services. I would be concerned that this wouldn't be considered small-scale. And it talks about there being, within the, sorry, I'm just looking for the right words here, but it's, it's something along the lines of within the character of the community. And again, if you drive through Port Williams, especially on this side, I don't think that three big five-story apartment buildings is the kind of character of Port Williams. It's not the kind of character that people are looking for who are moving here and have chose to make this their home, whether they're new residents, which we heard from who've moved here recently, or lifelong residents like me and my family. So again, I thank you for your time, and I would just urge you to reconsider this development.
Thank you, Mr. Newcombe. Yes, sir.
John Cogswell, 1010 Belcher Street. We're located at the 850-meter mark. Everybody's touched on most of the points I had, being the nuisance complaints. 850 meters is not far enough to get away from the smell of chicken manure, cow manure. When I was a member of the Kentville Volunteer Fire Department, I'd go down there for practice, and the folks down there would often comment that they could tell myself and Newcombe's were spreading manure because they could smell it in town. This lasted a couple of days, but they were kilometers away. We're talking 800 meters alongside the river that changes twice a day. As it changes, the wind changes. That pulls... That pulls that smell back and forth. We do our best to contain that smell as quick as we can. Sometimes that takes a couple of days. We don't need six hundred people calling saying that we stink, which you've seen with your sewer issue, which we also smell, and we understand the difficulty with dealing with that. I've heard a couple of times this evening, people talk about this road safety. And I'll touch base on a couple of points there. We live in the eighty-kilometer-hour stretch, okay? It's outside the school zone. It's not near the school. Daily, throughout the week, we will meet cars on the straight stretch, passing on a double solid line, coming against agriculture equipment. Our agriculture equipment has grown massive in the past twenty years. This becomes difficult to navigate them alongside bikers. And the other traffic that we're kind of ignoring is the pedestrian. When people start walking Belcher Street, walking dike walls, wandering these cover crops that are beautiful at bloom, it becomes very difficult for us as farmers to watch for these people. We want them to be safe, we want them to be educated. It's very difficult to do that with six hundred people. We don't get a classroom or time to sit down with all of them. Not all of them want anything to do with us. We stink, we're loud, we're dirty. This poses for extreme danger in field. There have been incidents in our province of individuals being run over by farm equipment because they were uneducated as to what they were dealing with in the fields they were playing in. As a young farmer, this is one of my biggest concerns. I really don't want to have to go home after running over a twelve-year-old girl. I hope that when you guys are thinking about this, you look at all these aspects, and that we do want development. We do encourage people to be educated about our industry. We want people to move here who want to join our industry. I know six hundred people don't want to pick apples, milk cows, check the chickens, or sit in tractors. Smaller development, we can get behind. Big ones, it impedes us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak to this? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Trudy DeGraw. I don't live anywhere near this development, proposed development. I do have a Port Williams mailing address and a Caning phone number, so I'm kind of on the border. The reason I wanted to speak is because I am also a farmer. I also have rental units. Speaking on behalf of the Newcombs that have spoke before, we tend to buy everything that comes for sale near us, because we don't want neighbors. We do this because there has been farms that have been shut down because of complaints, overwhelming complaints from neighbors and other people in the community. So I can attest to this development.
Sorry, Ms. DeGraw, could you tell us what your address is, so we can orient you?
Eight forty-five Canard Street, Lower Canard.
Okay. Thank you.
But Mr. Newcomb kind of said it quickly, but he is a tenth-generation farmer. They've been there a very long time, and I realize that these developers have a residence on this property, but they also have the option to move. When you're a farmer, you're stuck where you're stuck. So, I mean, you saw the pictures of Port Williams. People move into the area for the quiet, peaceful enjoyment of their land. With so many new residents coming into the area, that's going to go away. And it's also going to increase crime in the area, and I don't know how they're going to deal with that, but it's just a fact that when you have more people, you're going to have more crime. So I can just say that, you know, like the other gentleman said, he moved to the area because it's a small community, and that's what people want it to stay as. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak to the application? Yes, ma'am.
Lindsay McDonald, eleven fifty-five Belcher Street. I just wanted to add a quick comment on functionality-wise. By adding more than fifty percent of the current Port Williams population, there is no bus route running along Belcher Street. There's no grocery store, there's no pharmacy, there's no fuel station. So it would have to be three hundred cars' worth of private transport added. There's no option for anything, and everyone would have to commute in order to get basic necessities. And I think that it would just cause a lot more congestion compared to if it was located closer to a bus lane or a bus line and, like, the grocery stores and pharmacies, like I said. That was my only comment.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, sir.
Michael Forsythe, partner of that Lindsay McDonald at one-one-five-five. You've heard from a lot of their neighbors and direct stakeholders in this. I just moved back from Antigoneesh a couple of days ago. I'm previously an engineer, and I'm going back to school to become a nurse right now, so I have a bit of background to offer to some of the things that we're talking about, many of which have been spoken about already. The only thing I really want to reiterate is the interest of housing that has been mentioned a few times tonight, as far as development for the town. And I think that if that is the number-one interest of the parties, that there's been a lot talked about why not having the development might be in the best interest. I think that the housing is a really relevant point. We all understand that there's a housing crisis right now. I think the biggest thing for me is that the location makes no sense for many of the points that have been made tonight. I think housing to bring people to the area, to bring some of those economics to the region, some of the tax for the municipality, I just think that it is in much, much better interest to have that location maybe closer to the east, closer to Main Street, where that people are accessible, to be able to use foot traffic, to be on a bus lane, perhaps. I can speak to being the neighbor on the western part of the proposed lot, that many times I've attempted to go for walks around the neighborhood to Main Street. Again, the current condition, I understand there's a proposed sidewalk, but a lot of the things that haven't been touched on, as far as the speeds in that area, it's like a death trap trying to walk down past the school. So I can only imagine with that additional transportation, I don't think you would perhaps be seeing a lot of people at this proposed development that are walking on foot traffic down to Main Street. There's nothing in the other direction up, forgive me, north, I think, Canard, maybe I'm getting that wrong. But as far as foot traffic, there's really not a lot of accessibility in this area. I think it would be much more pertinent to be in a larger, more accessible area that has opportunities for, like was previously mentioned, gross gas, everything else. If you don't have that, it's going to be all brought in by single-use vehicles. And I guess also coming in relatively new, I don't really know how a lot of the proceedings happened here, but I'll reiterate a lot of what was mentioned about accessibility and transparency with this meeting. I'm kind of astonished that more people within the community weren't made aware. I've heard that resonated a few times tonight, the short windows, the region away from the development that was required to be notified. I would hope, for the sake of transparency and making what hopefully the community would benefit from, that more stakeholders in the community would have been aware and hopefully would have turned out tonight. I would encourage you to listen to the voices of your community, which have overwhelmingly been one-sided tonight. I don't think I've heard a single party in favor, and I would highly encourage you to say no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm Sean Maxwell from eleven sixty Canadian Mount Road. I've been a resident of Kings County for thirty-two years. I've been involved in agriculture for almost forty, and I know all of the farms on Belcher Street very well. I recognize the need and the crisis for housing in Kings County, and I know we need to do as much as we can to resolve it. I've also personally worked on the land both north and west of this development. I would encourage council and staff to consider the size of the implements and the tractors that are required or needed to provide competitive local food production in this area. I used to meet tractors and manure spreaders that weren't a problem. I'm not sure the infrastructure exists today, and I know that's not your problem. I'm sure if you want some of the farmers to provide you with the pictures of the implements that they have, they will. But it's an important part of agriculture. So I'm not going to encourage you to vote for or against. I just would encourage you to get a little more information. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Zachary Matars. I have no relation to you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm a resident of twelve seventy Belcher Street. My partner Lee Fellows already came up and spoke a few moments ago. I have no real points to add to this. There have been many valuable points brought up. I'm a member of the Canadian Forces. I took a posting to Aldershot because I wanted to work in someplace rural that reminded me of the agricultural country that I lived in when I was growing up on Prince Edward Island. I found exactly that in Port Williams. I don't mind the manure smell, in fact, it reminds me of home. So glad to have it there, and if people have a problem with that, then that's their own problem for choosing to live in such a beautiful location. I simply want to go on record and say that as a member of this community, I'm concerned with regards to the location of this proposed development. There are many better locations for this. You don't have to be a town planner, you don't have to be an expert at reading terrain, or even expert enough to take a look at the location where this is purported to be or suggested to be, to know that this location doesn't make any sense. Ultimately, I'm up here to echo all the points that my fellow community members have brought up, and to go on record that I am most certainly not in favor of this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. If you're from Prince Edward Island, I'm afraid we are related. Anyone else wish to speak, please? Not afraid for myself, afraid for you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Pam Bowers, and we live next door to the property that is going to be or proposed to be. We share our driveway with the school. And in regards to traffic, when there are events going on at the school, I have a hard job getting in and out of my driveway, let alone going up and down the street. When there are events going on at the school and people are parked on both sides of the road, nine times out of ten, they are walking across our property to get to the school to be safe for the kids that are going to the events. If you add that amount of people and the driveways on our property, not on our property, but beside our property, one of the access points to the development, what's going to happen when you have all of those kids going to school? Are they going to go out the road, down the sidewalk? Not likely. I don't, we don't want to have all of those kids walking across our property, all the people walking across our property to get to the ball field, to get to the tennis court, to get to the playgrounds for the kids. We don't mind that now, but if you add a whole bunch more, like, that's, it's crazy. And it's crazy as it is when the events are going on at the school and people are parked on both sides of the driveway, or both sides of the highway. There's just no room for anything. My husband drives truck. When there's a lot of traffic, he can't even get in the driveway. So it's, you know, if you add all that, all those more people, there's just not going to be room for everybody to move. That's my concern. And like I said, as it is when there's events going on, we share the driveway with the school. Lots of times, we have to ask people to move out of our driveway so that we can get into the driveway and get into the house. That's the only point that I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Any other person wish to speak to the issue?
Geneva Newcomb, twelve fifty-six Belcher Street. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, because I think both Brian and David have done a good job outlining the concerns for the farm. But I would ask council just to think if it was reversed. If we had a patch of agricultural land that was surrounded by apartment buildings, and we put an application in for an intensive livestock operation, would that really be considered? I mean, we'd be foolish to do that, but, you know, intensive livestock and high-density housing are not a good mix for anybody.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? No? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yes, would you like to speak, sir?
Hayden Hopgood, twelve oh seven Belcher Street, we're the applicant. So hi, everybody. We are the Hopgoods, who are proposing this development. And thanks for being here today to hear us. Whether you're for the product or against the project, we're all here because we care about Port Williams and we want to see, we want what's best for Port Williams. Our family has either owned land or lived in Port Williams for over thirty years now. And in that time, we watched it grow from a small community that had one corner store that I used to visit as a kid, to the vibrant town that it is now. I think we've got three restaurants, two breweries, and a handful of other amenities that have started to pop up in the downtown core. We feel our development would only add to the community, allowing residents of Port Williams, young and old, to have more options to live. We intend on building new buildings, three of them, with new-age technologies inside of them, such as, you know, air conditioning and heating throughout, with air-circulating units inside the units to provide great air quality, with an emphasis on landscaping, to ensure we keep ample amounts of green space. Can't stress that enough, that we want to preserve as much of what's there and also reinstate once development is finished. The buildings will include lots of amenities, such as community gardens, walking trails, potentially outdoor children play areas, gyms, and much more inside the buildings, such as card-playing rooms and different things like that, to keep residents entertained. As a pro, the buildings would be tucked away. There is a pre-existing berm, which I think we've talked about a couple of times tonight, on Belcher Street. So if you, once completed, when you're passing by the project, I don't think you'd hardly notice it, especially in the summertime when all the leaves are out. With regards to the traffic, I feel like that's been a hot topic tonight. As part of our development agreement application, we had to have a professional engineering traffic study completed by Design Point Engineering. That traffic study was completed and submitted to the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works, and the study found that Belcher Street was more than adequate to, more than adequate and capable of taking the traffic generated by our proposal. And some of the numbers used tonight in previous speeches are quite inflated, as to exactly how many cars are going to be there. Those numbers were quite inflated. With the current state of housing, we feel this is the best way to provide places for residents to live, start families, or settle down. Our piece of land is within the growth center of Port Williams, and we feel it is a great way that we could help during the housing crisis and help Port Williams propel forwards into the future. Got a few bullet points here that I've been making while other community members have been speaking. One of them being, so with development such as ours comes infrastructure, such as sidewalks and bus routes. Obviously, those are things that could be talked about as development happens, as I'm sure you guys are well aware. We are with- We are within the growth center, and it is zoned for density such as this. And as Ms. Mosier pointed out, if the growth doesn't happen here, where does it happen? There are no other places in Port Williams. They're all single-family homes and currently occupied by those family homes. We currently live across the road and have for, in this particular property, I think about seven years now. Yes, we do smell things sometimes, but it's just part of the valley. And the people that want to live in a community such as the one we're proposing want to have those things that are in the valley. The smell that's across the road is negligible. I don't think I've ever complained about it in my life. That's what makes the valley and gives it its charm. And that's what would be a selling feature of wanting to live there. So as noted, we've owned the land for over twenty years. In those years, I grew up there as a kid while it was a sand pit when we had excavators and bulldozers and different things in there as we were shipping out material. We've never seen any of the bank swallows referenced. We had an environmental study done, I think that was facilitated by Ms. Mosier, and there was nothing, nothing found. We're pro-environment, and I can't stress the fact that we want to try and keep as much of the forest that is surrounding the property now. I think you've seen in a lot of the photos now that where the infrastructure is potentially to be built, it's just a sand pit. There's nothing there now, and we really just want to add to the community.
Hello, my name is Michael Napier. I'm the official applicant on this file. I've been working with the present owners for over two years now on this file, and I've been working with planning staff for over a year and a half on this file. It's gone through all the processes that are dictated by the development agreement. A lot of people have said today that they didn't know about this and found themselves blindsided. There's been adequate and ample notification over time that this has happened. So, you know, I know the big thing with all these projects is it involves change, and change is an unknown. And, you know, the valley is a special place. I presently live in Wolfville. I moved to the valley from Halifax for lots of reasons. I live on Main Street. I'm used to traffic. Traffic is the major complaint at every public hearing that we attend. People don't like traffic. But if we can populate Port Williams to create more facilities so that people don't have to go to New Minus and places like that to do their shopping, then perhaps this traffic can be reduced. Creating this critical mass is very important for urban development. And this particular site is a terrific example of an underutilized space within the great area to put the density. And if the density is concentrated in one area, this is going to protect the farmland. It's not going to compromise the farmland because it gives people a place to live close to these farms without impeding on their land. And yes, you know, the specter of smell has come up quite a bit tonight. We worked on Woodman's Grove in Wolfville years ago, and the same thing occurred there. There was concerns from the adjacent farms in Kings County to Wolfville that people would move in and wouldn't understand what a farm was and that it would smell. An appeal was made to the URB after it was voted in favor of by Wolfville Council. It was defeated by the URB because they said that it wasn't relevant to the municipal planning strategy and everything met the criteria. The dyke lands are in front of my place. Regularly, they're fertilized. Regularly, the smell comes in and goes out. That's part of the charm, frankly, of being here. I grew up on the South Shore and in Halifax, and, you know, I was used to the smell of the Atlantic Ocean. Well, now I have slightly different smells. But no matter where you live, there are certain items that you live with, and it's part of the lovely valley atmosphere, and that's one of the reasons that I moved here. And so, the only other thing would be, and this is all nitpicking, because some people will say that whether it's 2.25 persons per unit or three persons per unit, it's still a lot of people. Really, when the studies are done, the number that would be used per unit, as far as an average, would be 2.25, which would equate to 450 versus 600. If you don't want change, that's still 450 more people in your neighborhood that you don't want. But we need housing. We need places for people to live. And the reason people come here is because it's so nice. And, you know, you can't keep the genie in the bottle forever. So I think that this development in this location is a wonderful one and a great opportunity for Port Williams. And I think that the people that live in these buildings will bring positive things to the neighborhood. Just because a person lives in an apartment doesn't make them inferior to other people who can afford single-family dwellings. Yes, housing's expensive, but we have to create housing. And the only way we're going to create affordable housing for people is to create more housing because for forty, fifty years now, the Nova Scotia government has been negligent and has not created housing. And we've got ourselves in a real pickle. And when you look at the projections of how many units we have to build in the next number of years to accommodate our population, it's quite staggering. And one of those speakers tonight talked about the healthcare system. For sure, with the projections for Nova Scotia and the people that are going to be immigrating and the population growth, we need growth in everything. It's not just housing. It's the healthcare services, it's transportation. I could go on and on, but you've already heard a lot tonight, and I just feel that this is a great place and a great opportunity for the community of Port Williams. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Napier. Yes. No, you'll have to come to the mic, please, because we're on the record.
Cindy McDonald. While we're on the topic of affordable housing, I would like to know from the developers what the average cost to rent one of these units is going to be?
Well, you, Mr. Napier can answer that or not. First of all, it would be perhaps proprietary. Second, it might be premature to be able to put a cost on a project that's not even built yet. But I leave it to Mr. Napier as to whether he wants to answer the question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you're correct. It is premature, and we would be aiming for market value. That's a huge range. And, you know, to talk about affordable housing is a whole nother thing than the policies within, you know, Kings County. And so right now, I could not put a dollar value on what it would be.
All right, thank you, sir. Can... All right, anyone else wish to ask a question or make a presentation? Well then, if not, I want to thank you all for being here. It's, this is how communities work. This is how these applications work as well. We've been sitting here for a long time. Those who wish to, I'm going to adjourn the hearing. Those who wish to leave are certainly welcome to do so. Those who wish to stay for the subsequent council meeting are welcome to do so. But I am going to declare a recess for a bit so we can all have a health break. I adjourn this hearing. Thank you for coming, and thank you for your participation. Thank you for coming and thank you for your participation. Ladies and gentlemen, councillors, I'm going to call to order the meeting of municipal council for Tuesday, July the 4th, 2023. The agenda has been circulated. I'm going to begin the meeting as is customary with roll call, please. Would you indicate your presence or? I was going to say otherwise, but you can't really do that now. All councillors are present with the exception of councillor Hertel and deputy mayor Emily Lutes. It's in order therefore if it's the wish of council that we receive a motion that the deputy mayor and the councillor be excused from the meeting. Moved by councillor Granger, seconded by councillor Meisner. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favour or otherwise, please vote now. For the purposes of the public, the reason that we have this motion, which has now been passed, is that if a councillor misses three consecutive meetings without the consent of council, then they lose their seat. So when there's a legitimate reason, it's customary to pass a motion excusing them. If there's not a legitimate reason, then that's one strike. Okay, proceeding then with the agenda itself. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by the councillor to my left. Seconded by the councillor to my right. Councillor Harding and councillor Meisner. No, I call him councillor Harding. This is an in-joke, folks, I'm sorry to have to impose it on you. All those in favour or otherwise, please vote now. Now that everybody's aware in the event that there's something on the agenda with which any councillor has a conflict, whether it's at the beginning or sometime or some place, other place in the agenda, because of a personal financial interest or a family's personal financial interest or an employment interest or some such thing, then now would be the time to declare it. No conflicts of interest declared, we're moving on to item four. We met on June the 6th, 2023 as council and then on June 20th, 2023 as a special council meeting. The minutes have been circulated, I'd receive a motion to approve the minutes of those meetings. Moved by councillor Meisner, seconded by councillor Granger. All those in favour or otherwise, please vote now. Motion's passed unanimously, moving to item five, business arising from the minutes. Does any councillor find any business arising that they wish to point out from the meeting of June the 6th, 2023? I can advise council that regarding the discussion at that meeting of J-Class roads, the Department of Public Works did not approve the substitution of Pine Street for Old French Road on the list of roads that we submitted to them for cost sharing. With the following explanation that they gave, and that is to say Pine Street is a gravel road and Old French Road appears to be paved already. The department has two separate budget amounts for roads that are gravel being paved and for paved roads being repaved. All our funds, still in quotes, for paved roads have been committed. And that's the reason for declining our request to substitute one road for the other. And for the purposes of the public, again, these are what we call J-Class roads. Their costs shared 50/50 between the province and the municipality. The province has set aside annually a certain amount of money, $2 million the last time I looked, to be shared amongst 48 municipalities that want to do J-Class road paving. So you can appreciate that it's a, we often get turned down on the number of roads, let alone individual roads. And I didn't see anything arising from the minutes of June 20th. Anybody else see anything arising from those minutes? Well, then moving on to item six, planning advisory committee recommendations of June 14th, 2023. And councillor Armstrong as chair of planning advisory committee, if you would take those, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first item is that municipal council give final consideration to entering into a development agreement to permit comprehensive neighborhood development at 1207 Belcher Street and associated properties PID 55030092, 55512, sorry, 55523153, 55534978 and 55037915, which is substantively the same, same for minor differences in form as the draft set out in appendix D of the report dated May 3rd, 2023. I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second here? Councillor Meisner, seconds, thank you. Discussion on the motion. Councillor Meisner.
Yes, I would move that we tabled this motion until we have, are able to give more in-depth thought from the things that we've heard from the community members this evening. I think that a lot of very valid points and concerns have been brought up to us this evening and I would like to have a more full evening, and I would like to have more full some time to go into depth about those comments and some of the points that were brought up. So I'm just wondering if we could move to table this to committee of the whole or special council the third Tuesday of the month?
In the event that someone is inclined to second that motion, I subscribe to the reasons, but in fairness, we should bring it back at an early date, both in fairness to the applicants and in fairness to the public who spoke this evening. But it is a good thing to have time to order your thoughts, because you need to justify whatever your vote is. I apologize for speaking before the motion is seconded. Is there a second here? Seconded by councillor Granger. Motion to table. All those in favor or otherwise, please vote now. Wow, that was a surprise to our secretary, so she's had a typeless. Madam Secretary, with your, if I may say it again. I would remove the question for more information and discussion and just say table the motion to allow council to, councilors to develop rationale for their ultimate vote on the issue. Because we're not in a position to take more information or discussion, the public hearing having been had, that's the end of the discussion. All that this motion would do is to allow councilors to go back and develop their rationale in order to justify whatever vote they intend to bring to the table during debate, after debate, actually. And the matter wouldn't be dealt with until it's brought back to the table. And as I said, my recommendation is that it be brought back at the earliest possible date, which is, we're probably in a position to have a council, a special council meeting to piggyback on the next committee of the whole meeting, which is a regular meeting. Is that satisfactory? Then if you're happy, the mover and seconder of the motion are happy with the rate it reads right now, yes? Then I'd ask you to vote on the motion, yea or nay. That's unanimously passed. The motion has been tabled. And again, as an explanation to the people who are interested, the reason that council has made this decision is so that each councillor can gather together the notes that they made during the discussions that were brought forward in the public hearing and give an orderly and reasoned response and justification for the vote that they bring forward on the issue. And that we will bring it back at the earliest opportunity, I assure you. So our next meeting, our next committee of the whole meeting, Madam Clerk, is when?
July 18th.
That's July the 18th.
July the 18th.
Yes, and we had already scheduled a special council following that committee of the whole meeting as well, so council could potentially deal with this matter then.
Okay, so we'll put that on the agenda for that special council meeting. Okay, councillor Armstrong, if you'd proceed, please.
The municipal council appoint Doug Brown and Mervyn Stedman, members of the Centerville District Community Development Association, to the Centerville area advisory committee for one-year term. I so move.
A second here, please. Councillor Meisner, seconds. Any discussion on the motion? This, I take it was a submission, these names came from the advisory?
Yes.
Committee? Yes, thank you. No discussion? All those in favor or otherwise, please vote now. That's unanimous, thank you. And the next item?
The municipal council discharge the existing development agreement and give first reading to and hold a public hearing regarding the application to rezone 5352 Prospect Road, PID 55199137 New Minas, from the Highway Commercial C5 Zone to the Mixed Commercial C3 Zone, as described in Appendix B of the report dated June 14th, 2023. I so move.
Second here. Councillor Harding. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor or otherwise, please vote now. That's unanimously passed, thank you. And item D, the next public hearing date is?
It will be determined after we decide whether we're going to suspend our meetings for the month of August.
Okay, thank you. So we'll talk about that at our next meeting. Moving on to, thank you councillor Armstrong. Moving on to item seven, planning and inspection services. Item A is with respect to the discharge of existing agreement regarding 9209 Commercial Street, New Minas. And Ms. Allman is here to speak to that. Ms. Allman, when you're ready, just let me get your light here first. Can you turn your own light on? Thank you. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is an application. So Mr. Cadre applied on behalf of Cadre Holdings, Inc., to discharge the development agreement at 9209 Commercial Street in New Minas. Mr. Cadre entered, or Cadre Holdings, Inc., entered into the development agreement with the municipality on August 19th, 2019. When the New Minas secondary plan came into effect, the development agreement on the property actually became more limiting than what would be permitted as of right with the new secondary plan. So as a result, Mr. Cadre would like the DA discharged to be able to proceed with the property as of right. So the property is located at 92, oh, sorry, 9029 Commercial Street, PID 55210121 in New Minas. The subject property is 2.55 acres in size and is located on the north side of Commercial Street. The subject property is irregularly shaped and approximately 490 feet effrontage along Commercial Street. It is the site of the former village commission office for the village of New Minas. So Mr. Cadre acquired the property in 2017, and as I stated, he did enter into that development agreement in 2019. So this is the future land use map. As you can see, the property sits off of Commercial Street, and there is both commercial and residential designations on the property. So council has the ability to discharge a development agreement under the Municipal Government Act. It states that the agreement is in effect until discharged by council in accordance with the terms of the agreement or in concurrence with the property owner. In this case, the property owner is requesting the change. Section 3.5 of the existing development agreement states, notwithstanding the foregoing discharge of this agreement is not a substantial matter, and the agreement may be discharged by council without a public hearing. Additionally, section 5.3.6 of the municipal planning strategy recognizes that council will include discharge policies within the development agreement as described above. Should council discharge the agreement, the permissions and requirements of the general commercial C1 Zone would apply to this property. Under the municipality of the County of Kings' planning policies, no public information meeting is required for the discharge of a development agreement, and council holds final consideration only, and the decision is not appealable. So after a review, municipal staff are of the opinion that discharging this development agreement would be in the applicant's best interests, as he'll be able to use the property as he intended to when he entered into the development agreement before the New Minas secondary plan came into effect. So the potential motion is up on the screen.
Thank you. It's been suggested that we entertain a motion that municipal council approve the discharge of the development agreement dated June 5th, 2019, between Cadre Holdings, Inc. and the municipality of the County of Kings regarding lands located at 9209 Commercial Street, New Minas, as described in Appendix E of the report dated April 1st, 2019.
Just an amendment, the, Mr. Mayor, the report was dated June 6th. Oh, sorry, no, that's the original, that's the original development agreement, sorry.
Okay. Do we have the address correct? Because I noticed in the agenda it was?
It is 9209.
Okay. So our previous document on the screen said 9029?
Oh, yeah, that's backwards there.
So it's 9209, correct?
Yes. 9209.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Madam Clerk, I missed your light.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may ask, I believe that the motion, as included in the package, had a date of August 19th, 2019. So I just wanted to make sure for the record what the correct date is.
With regard to the date of the agreement, or with regard, yeah, with regard to the date of the agreement, eh?
Yes, the date of the development agreement.
For clarification, so the date of the report was April 1st. The day it was registered with the land registry office was August 19th of 2019.
Okay, so the, so the date in the motion for the development agreement should be August 19th, 2019?
No, that's, that's perfect.
It is June the 5th?
Yeah.
Okay. And the?
April 1st.
There are two dates in the motion, so I just want to make sure we have the right ones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm through you to our clerk. April 1st is the date of the report that went to AAC, so that would have been the first public release of the draft development agreement. But then it went to AAC on April 1st, probably went to PAC April 2nd Tuesday in April in 2019, and then council in May, June, and finally registered in August.
Okay, while we have you at the podium, the date of the development agreement is June 5th, 2019, is it?
The date it was registered is August 19th.
But the date of the agreement itself? The motion reads that the date of the agreement is June 5th, 2019?
So the agreement was signed by the second party on August 8th, 2019. The resolution was given to you, Mr. Mayor, and our clerk for signature on June 5th. But from, and feel free to correct me as our legal expert, from a legal perspective, we typically take the effective date as the date it's registered. So we would take the effective date as August 9th.
How many development agreements do we have with Cadre Holdings, Inc.? Quite a few?
I'm sorry?
How many development agreements do we have with Cadre Holdings, Inc.? More than one, do we? Yes, okay.
More than one, yes, certainly.
All right. We have the street address, we have one of the dates that the agreement was executed. So I'm happy. Is everybody else happy? Motion's moved by councillor Armstrong and seconded by councillor Meisner. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor or otherwise, please vote now. I apologize, Ms. Allman, for the confusion I caused. It won't be the last time.
Keep me on my toes.
Thank you for your presentation. The motion's unanimously passed. Moving on then to item 7B. We're going to Ms. Javerick regarding the appointment of a development officer.
Good evening, council. I just have a very short presentation. Tonight, we're looking at granting an appointment to a existing staff member. Just in way of background, the Municipal Government Act requires that the municipality appoint, through council, a position called the development officer to administer development control on behalf of council. This appointment allows the development officer to administer and enforce the Municipal Government Act and any applicable regulations and bylaws for the municipality. In terms of how busy have we been? 2022 was extremely busy for the municipality in terms of number of permits processed by this position. We were looking at 1,191 permit applications in that same timeframe, 1,086 permits were issued. And finally, in terms of subdivision approval, the development officers granted approval 163 times, creating 313 lots last year. In way of comparison, pre-COVID permit applications would have been in around the 900 range. So we are seeing a steady increase. The MGA defines a development officer as the person or persons appointed by council to administer the land use bylaw. The MGA also states that council shall appoint the development officer. Recently, we had a vacancy occur within that section, so we have two dedicated positions of development officers. So one is currently in the recruitment stage to ensure that timelines are able to be met. And again, those are mandated timelines. It is a position that does have mandated through the MGA timelines that must be met. For example, I gave a few examples here. Permit applications, the development officer must review those applications within 14 days to determine if they are complete or if more information is required. So again, each of those job functions have mandated timelines, and certainly with a vacancy and only one person currently doing this work, staff were concerned of workload. To help alleviate that, we have a recommendation before council to appoint the manager, Laura Mosier, as a development officer, an additional development officer. Mosier, as a development officer, an additional development officer. Myself, I am also appointed by council to help make things continue to roll for, for the county. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Javerick? Questions of clarification? No. It's been recommended that municipal council hereby appoint Laura Mosier as a development officer for the municipality of the County of Kings, as required under section 243 sub 1 of the Nova Scotia Municipal Government Act while employed with the municipality. Do we have a mover of the motion? Moved by Counselor Meisner, seconded by Counselor Allen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, or otherwise, please vote now. Thanks, Ms. Javerick. The motion's passed, but Counselor Armstrong isn't voting? All right, I'm not taking the bait, I'm just not. Moving on to item 8, administration. 8A, council and committee of the whole meetings in August. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an annual decision of council, whether or not council wishes to take a break from council and committee of the whole meetings in August. As you can see in the request for decision, I've been keeping track for the past nine years of which meetings were held and which ones were canceled. In those nine years, we had three regular councils that were held in, in August, and the other six were canceled. In those nine years, there was never a committee of the whole meeting in August, and we did have four special council meetings in the past nine years to deal with time-sensitive matters. And I would like to propose that council and committee of the whole not meet in August 2023 unless there are urgent and pressing matters to be dealt with. So that is the recommended motion, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions of the clerk? Thank you, Madam. Counselor Armstrong has a question.
Madam Clerk, if there is a need to call a meeting, how much notice would we have? Because if we're working under the assumption that we're not going to have any meetings, you know, we may make plans, and then all of a sudden something comes up. How much lead time would you give us if a special meeting was needed to be called?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Armstrong, we would try to give, obviously, as much notice as possible, and we would poll council for a date. We wouldn't just arbitrarily set, set a date.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
That's a good question. I, yeah. The other way of doing it would have been to just leave the date on the assumption that if, if nothing was coming up, the, the meeting date, the meeting would be canceled. But it's kind of the same thing either way, notice-wise, isn't it? So, yeah, we'll take that. So it's been recommended the council and committee of the whole not meet in August of '23 unless there are urgent and pressing matters to be dealt with. Can I have a mover of the motion? Moved by Counselor Killen, seconded by Counselor Harding. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, or otherwise, please vote now. That's unanimous. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, perhaps we can now confirm the date of the next public hearing, assuming that we have no council meetings in August, then the next public hearing date would be September the 5.
Thank you. Ms. Javerick, is that jive? Yes, okay. That's satisfactory, we just do not know it's sufficient. Yep. Council agrees. Now, the CAO is going to speak with us regarding a new cost-share agreement, the provincial village slash subdivision roads, which I'm sure will be a discussion of interest to us all. Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as indicated, this is about J-class roads. There's really two components to J-class roads. It relates back to the mid-1990s in Service Exchange. One deals with an annual maintenance fee that the municipality pays to the, to the province, and this deals with 135.15 kilometers or 388 roads. The second component is a competitive process to apply for capital money. So the second one, the competitive process for capital money, is, is what this presentation is about this evening. As I mentioned, it's been around since the mid-1990s. We have a four, or I'm sorry, a three-year agreement that's expiring the end of this fiscal year, March 31, 2024, and the province has advised that they wish to enter into a new three-year agreement. So the agreement is basically, the basic provisions, although there are others, 50/50 cost share between the province and the municipality for quote-unquote paving. We submit a priority list to Nova Scotia Public Works by October 31 each, each year, and then we have to respond within 20 business days after our list has been approved. So that's a 50/50, but if the street involves manholes or curb stops, those types of things, that's 100% of, at our cost. That's not considered quote-unquote paving. So any additional work in parenthesis is 100% at the municipality's burden. The province is responsible for tendering and contract administration, and they notify the municipality of any cost overrun greater than 10%. So there's no real financial impact for the present fiscal year, the '23-'24. What is before you would allow us the opportunity, if executed, to participate in cost-sharing arrangements for the forthcoming three fiscal years. Funding levels from Nova Scotia Public Works are not guaranteed from year to year, as we've discussed on a number of occasions, and staff would bring forward funding proposals during each of the annual budget deliberations or cycles. So our recommendation is that municipal council authorize the mayor and CAO to sign cost-share agreement 23014 for a new cost-share agreement or arrangement with the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works for paving provincial subdivision roads is attached to the July 4, 2023 council agenda.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Questions, Counselor Armstrong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple. In your preamble, you were talking about the maintenance fee that we pay aside from this particular agreement. Does that include ditching? Because I get a lot of calls from residents about the ditches on the side of J-class roads that are blocked or need to be trimmed or whatever. So does that particular part of the agreement, our maintenance fee that we pay them, does that include the ditches on the sides of the roads?
To the best of my understanding, Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Armstrong, it's purely a financial transaction. We pay so much a kilometer, I believe it's a little north of $900,000 a year. It goes into consolidated revenue of the province. It does not necessarily go into public works budgets.
Interesting. Okay. So they don't have to say where their money goes?
Exactly.
Okay. Just getting that as clear. As far as the contract goes, I noticed on your, on your first page there, you said that additional work would be done, right here. Additional work will be expensed at 100% of the province's standard unit prices. But in the contract, it says that they may con, they may tender. So which one do they use if they tender it? Do they tender it to the...
I could stand to be corrected on this, but my understanding is that they do, when they tender, they have standard prices. They used to in years past, anyway. So that would be the basis of the tender. They'll have, they keep an inventory of cost, and so they'll go to a contractor and say, if there's additional work, will you do it for X amount for this?
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. But the kilometer rate would change?
Pardon me?
The kilometer rate would change. Otherwise, why take its tender?
Yeah, the main tender would still go, the main contract would still go to tender, yes.
Okay. And the only other one I had is under section 8. It says cost overruns. Subject to section 7, the municipality should pay, shall pay for any cost overruns associated with paving a village and subdivision road. We're only paying 50%, so why doesn't it say 50% of any cost overrun?
Again, good question. My read of this would be that we're still only limited to 50%, so I would, we can certainly get that clarified. In the past, we've, speaking of...
What you think and what, what I think and what they think, maybe two different things, and if, if we're only obligated to 50%, I'd like to see it there.
So in the past, and as a matter of fact, some of these July-August meetings are August, if that's the, if that's the convention of when we may delay a meeting. I recall one year that I've been here, that we had a convene meeting to deal with a 10%. So when that paperwork comes back to council, that's when that can be clarified. So if it comes in and it's 10% over that range, well, then we'll make sure we're paying 50% of whatever overrun would be.
Yeah, but don't you think it would, to have it in the contract would make more
Possibly. I want to, I want to, I did skim read this, I want to, want to reread the whole contract.
Because it, I mean, it specifically says the municipality should pay for any cost overruns associated with the paving of village and subdivision roads, and it should say the municipality shall pay for 50% of any cost overruns associated with paving of village and subdivision roads.
That's one provision. I would want to read the rest of the provisions to see if something supersedes that.
Okay. Just thought I'd bring it up. Thank you.
Point taken.
If that's what they intend.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Good to know, though. Any other questions of the CAO and his report? The recommendation then, and we will definitely follow up on Counselor Armstrong's suggestion, but the recommendation is that municipal council authorize the mayor and CAO to sign the cost-share agreement 2023-014 for a new cost-share agreement with the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works for paving provincial subdivision roads is attached to the July 4, 2023 council agenda. Mover of the motion? Counselor Harding, seconder. Counselor Meisner, discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, or otherwise, vote now, please. That's unanimously passed. Thank you. Moving to item 9, financial services. Mr. Livingston's here to talk about King's Transit Authority operating capital budgets. You're moving around on me. Your mic is on, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So I'm here to present the King's Transit Authority budget for '23-'24, more specifically to recommend approval of their budget. There was a presentation previously made by the King's Transit Authority. As detailed on the slide for my overview, February 21, 2023 was a budget presentation from the authority. Subsequent to that presentation, there were revisions made to the budget, so I will cover those in this presentation. Additionally, wanted to point out that underway with King's Transit, significant undertaking in relation to the electrification of the fleet and other related types of modernization of their service. And just pointing out that the municipality's approval of their budget is set out in their intermunicipal services agreement. So the budget revisions on the screen currently is what was initially presented by the authority back in February. They presented total revenue expenses of 3.6 million, and King's operating capital contributions were combining to around 1.6, 1.06 million, $854,000 of operating contributions, and $210,000 of capital contributions. On the screen now is what the figures have been revised to, so total revenue and expenses The municipality, County of Kings, operating contribution has increased to $975,406, and the capital contribution has been dropped back down to historical levels at $48,000. So that is a roughly, around $40,000 overall decrease in the municipality's contribution, mostly in the capital contribution and a slight increase in the operating contribution, for which we cover 60%. So the total revenue and expenses have increased over the '22-'23 King's Transit budget by There's a figure on the slide now of the amount that the municipality's contribution was reduced by roughly $41,000, but our contribution to the operations of the authority has increased 19.5% over the '22-'23 budget. And significant increases that have been seen in the '23-'24 budget for the authority are salaries and benefits, an increase of $373,000. That represents roughly around 6.3% increase in rates for their employees, as well as the addition of 2.5 FTEs to the organization, two within operations, and a 0.5 for a director of finance level position that would be shared 50/50 with Valley Waste. The fuel budget also increased by $287,000. The increase here was to reflect the escalating prices of fuel in general, as well as to facilitate increased frequency of existing routes. And there's more detail on specific line item budgets within the appendix to the RFD. So before reading off any of the recommendations, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have on the approval of the King's Transit budget.
Counselor Armstrong?
I, I thought we already had somebody doing finance on King's Transit and Valley Waste. Are they not there anymore?
The, through you, Mr. Mayor, the staff that I believe you're referencing are still in the employ of both organizations, and we're looking for a more senior finance person to be shared between the organizations that would oversee the existing accounting positions.
So the one that's there now won't be there, and the more senior one will come in? Is that it?
The, the addition would not replace existing staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff of King's Transit Union United?
I, I shouldn't answer, since I don't know the answer for certain.
Okay. Best you don't, then. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Mr. Livingston. Do we know the number of employees that work at King's Transit?
It is roughly 32 and a half FTEs, I believe. I, I believe it is detailed in the RFD.
That's, that's full-time, right?
Yeah.
Seems like a large number for the budget increase on their salaries, that's all. Thank you.
Any other questions of the presenter? It's been recommended that municipal council approve the 2023-2024 operating budget for the King's Transit Authority with total expenditures of $3,809,892, and as attached as Appendix A to the July 4, 2023 request for decision, and the municipal council approve the 2023-2024 capital budget for the King's Transit Authority with total expenditures of $6,405,000, and as attached as Appendix A to the July 4, 2023 request for decision. Do I have a mover of the motion? Counselor Allen? Seconded by Counselor Meisner. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote now, yea or nay. Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote now, yea or nay. That's passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Item 10, committee of the whole recommendations are in the agenda package. Firstly, 10A, the municipal council direct the mayor to write letters of support of Annapolis Valley First Nations and the commission of the village of Cornwallis Square's name-change process, specifically request to amend the Municipal Government Act, section nine, to include villages to be submitted to the Hon. Tim Houston, Premier of Nova Scotia, and to the Hon. John Lor, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Mover of the motion, please? Moved by councillor Meisner. Seconded by councillor Allen. This is a matter that we've previously discussed, so, but if any further discussion needs to take place, seeing none, all those in favor or otherwise, please vote now. That's passed unanimously. Thank you. 10B is the recommendation of committee of the whole that municipal council approve the capital budget of the Hasport Volunteer Fire Department for the fiscal year 2023-2024 as attached to the June 10, 2023 request for decision in the amount of $215,294. Do I have a mover of the motion? Are you, no, no, I'm looking for the other guy. What's his name? Anybody over here want to move the motion? Moved by councillor Kilham, seconded by councillor Granger. Discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor or otherwise, please vote now. Did anybody get to attend the opening of the Hasport Fire Department? That's unanimously passed. Thank you. 10C, it's been recommended by committee of the whole that municipal council approve the operating budget of the Hasport Volunteer Fire Department for the fiscal year 2023-2024 as attached to the June 20, 2023 request for decision. Mover of the motion? Councillor Allen. Seconded? Councillor Armstrong. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor or otherwise, please vote now. That unanimously passed. Thank you. Moving on to item 11. Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee recommendation of committee of the whole is that municipal, well, it's actually a matter that should be dealt with perhaps by councillor Meisner as the chair. Councillor Meisner, would you like to move the motion? Or, and/or have any comments preceding? No?
I can just read it into the record if you want me to. That municipal council reappoint Mike Bishop from Village of Kingston and Andy Vermulon, Village of Canning, and appoint Rick Balsar, Village of Aylesford, as village commissioner, representatives on the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee for a three-year term commencing June 1, 2023. I so move.
And a seconder? Councillor Harding. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor or otherwise, please vote now. That's passed unanimously. Thank you. That moves us to item 12, sorry, board and committee reports. There have been no written reports received. Do we have any verbal reports to give to this meeting? Councillor Meisner?
Yes, thank you. I just want to, I guess, sort of give a report. I missed some of the meeting because of technology, but the Kentville Joint Fire Services Committee meeting, we met. And I just wanted to read it into the record that many of Kentville Fire Department, along with other volunteers along the valley, stood in to help with the wildfires on the South Shore. And on August 12, there is a parade and celebration and fundraising event taking place to honor those firefighters who came from out of county to support the people of Barrington during the time.
Thank you. We should, perhaps you could send us an email reminding all councillors of the dates. That would be useful. Thank you. Any other reports? External boards and committees, no reports from there. Looking for a motion to receive the oral report of the councillor. Councillor Kilham moves. Councillor Granger seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor or otherwise, please vote now. The motion is passed. The mover decided not to, he's voting in favor? Okay. Not at all, with all the mistakes I've made tonight, don't you worry. Under correspondence, I'd like a motion to receive the correspondence, please. Moved by councillor Meisner. Seconded by councillor Allen. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor or otherwise, please vote now. We have, for the record, received letters, three letters. One from the Nova Scotia Provincial Housing Agency regarding their application process, which speaks for itself. One from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing regarding asking municipalities to search their pockets for any extra land they may have that they can dedicate to housing. And it sounds like old news, actually, at a stage of the game, but we have conducted that search. And one from the Ecology Action Centre, who's putting out a call for municipalities to sign on to their letter and/or petition to the government to expeditiously, if not immediately, release the Coastal Protection Act regulations, because the act doesn't come into force until the regulations are issued. I have my own point of view on that item of correspondence, and that is I find the wording that they submitted a tad harsh, and we could send the same message equally as strongly, but keeping them on, keeping us on the friendship side and provide a copy to the Ecology Action Centre. If everyone is in favor of that, I'll just take it on. If you prefer me not to, then I'd like to hear from you. Okay? It is, it's not so bad in this municipality, because we have our own protections in place, but it is pretty critical in other coastal communities, municipalities within the province. Because people are clearly taking advantage of it inasmuch as they're just building as fast as they can build before these regulations get declared. So they're grandfathered. Is there any other business to come before the meeting? Comments from the public? Then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Only two want to adjourn. Okay. Councillor Meisner, I'll take your motion, and I'll take councillor Kilham's second. And I'll ask you to vote on the motion right now, please, yea or nay. I'll remind you while we're waiting for that result, that special council meeting on July 11, 9 o'clock, is being held to swear in the new councillor for District 8, Mr. Kevin Davison. So those that can be here, it would be great if you were in order to welcome the new councillor. The motion to adjourn has been passed unanimously. We are adjourned.